You're watching BCTV, Branford's Community Access Station.
This is BCTV, Branford Government Television, a service of Branford Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the Town of Branford.
All right, welcome. We'll call the Special Board of Selectmen's meeting for March 28th to... Item one, to consider and if appropriate approve a request from Gary Zalinski, Highway Supervisor, to waive the bid for the purchase of a 2,000 Ottawa Yard Spotter from Barnick's Truck and Equipment in the amount of $22,000. We have a letter in our packet. Gary, Dan, just give a brief overview of the...
Yeah, tell me what a yard spotter is.
Yard spotter is and the work that went to...
Well, a yard spotter is basically a truck with a fifth wheel.
Oh, okay.
It's like a, something for a tractor, like a tractor trailer.
Gotcha.
But it's just, it's a truck used, it's not an over-the-road vehicle.
It's just been used on-site to move the trailers around.
Yeah, yeah.
Strictly in the city. I know the department's been looking for a truck for, they've had it in their budget for a couple of years to replace. I think the one that they have there is probably at least thirty years old.
Thirty, thirty-plus years old.
Thirty-plus years old.
Yeah.
And I know it was, you know, in order to, for the purpose that it's used, rather than to go out and you could spend eighty to a hundred thousand, over a hundred thousand for this type of equipment, so...
Not something you find used very often either.
No, no. And the mechanics inspect this, and I believe you guys tried it out, right?
Yeah. It's been at the transportation for over a month now. They've been getting used to it, you know, vetted it out, made sure it fits our needs, and that it does.
And I see it's for $22,000. If I recall correctly, the apparatus plan had, I want to say thirty to thirty-five thou, I think thirty thousand budgeted towards it, so within the, what was planned as part of the plan.
I'll make a motion we approve.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing on all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. If you don't mind, if you just, we'll move number four up. Mike, did you need to... Item four is to consider and if appropriate approve a request from Mike Passou, Director of East Shore District Health Department, to waive the requirement for bidding pursuant to Section 73-2 of the Code of the Town of Branford, and authorize the sale of the Pump-Out Boat to Shrink the Boat LLC in the amount of $39,000. The town will receive 25% of that, which would be $9,750 of the sale, and the state will retain the remaining balance since the boat was purchased through a shared grant, 75-25% split. Mike, you want to give a quick overview of what you're doing?
Yes, good evening. So, we received a $200,000, or I'm sorry, we're purchasing a boat, a solar electric pump-out boat for $200,000. $152,000 and change is from the grant, and the balance is local match. And so, we want to sell this, the old pump-out boat for $39,000, and because we own 25%, the vendor will give us a check for $9,750, and the balance of that money gets rolled back into the federal program because the entire program is funded at 75% from Connecticut Deep. So, we have someone who gave us an offer. We did a survey, and the survey came back at $39,000, and he's given us full price for the $39,000, and the state has approved the sale if we approve it at a local level.
Okay. And just to be clear, you had a survey done, so we're getting the full value of the survey, of our portion, what we were receiving?
Correct, yes. We paid for a survey, and we're getting the full value of the survey.
Okay.
Mike, I know you put a lot of work into this and a lot of contract problems and whatnot, but you got it done. I'll make a motion we approve.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
We'll go to number five, to hear a report from Dan Gregory, Superintendent of the PCF, as required by 75-2-C2 of the Code of the Town of Branford for emergency work to repair a broken eight-inch sewer force main at the corner of Hemlock Road and Green Farms Road. The cost for the emergency work totaled $22,595. Dan's not here, but we have Brian Devlin. Brian, I want to just give a quick overview of what happened. We've dealt with this main before.
On March 4th, we had an issue. We had actually called the, we had to do bypass report. We had a section that cracked on us, on the force main. So, we had quality come out. They replaced a 20-foot section of the pipe. We also ordered a VFD that's coming in next week to slow the pumps, the pressure and align with, over the years. They were put in 1971. Actually, the drives are going to come in next week, so they, they came out, they did the work. They did like 15 hours to repair the section of pipe that had been replaced in the force main. And that was, we had some issues there before, but that was the latest one that we had.
And Brian, that comes out of your budget, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Again, there was emergency work. They responded to, had to be addressed.
Yeah.
Coming back, just to cover all the bases. I know the department was out there, you know, working with them as well as monitoring the work that was getting done. I feel we got a fair price. I was down by myself. However, the department is with, in conjunction with our consultant, evaluating ways to mitigate this problem in the future.
Sounds good. I'll make a motion we approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing on all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll go back to item two. Director's ready? To consider and if appropriate approve a request from Alex Peluzzi, Director of Parks and Recreation, to waive the bid for the reconditioning of the eight Hardtrue Clay Tennis Courts at Foot Park, and award the contract to Hinding Tennis Courts in the amount of $17,200.
Good evening, gentlemen. We, I went out and got three quotes on a few different competitive vendors that we've got from before, and we're, if you remember, a couple of years back, I came when we first took over Foot Park to do some conditioning. We thought we might get a year out of those courts. We ended up getting two years out of them, and we're again looking down the road to, to get them done this spring, and hopefully get another couple of years out of them. I do caution down the road that we have, I've talked to the First Selectman about this before, that somewhere down the road, those courts have been done, they're like 45 years old. We've built on top of them. At some point, we might have to go with a different product to redo, whether it's concrete, or whether we do asphalt again, or maybe even another product to get some more years out of them with the, with the crack, so...
Just to be clear, so, because we know we have a lot of people who use and appreciate that we're one of the very few municipalities that have Hardtrue Courts. You're referring to the asphalt courts when you're talking about the replacement?
Correct, right now.
The one, the bid that's before us right now is the hard maintenance of our court, which we intend to keep.
The ma, no, excuse me. The one in front of us right now is the, is the asphalt court right this second.
Okay, well, you're going to...
Did I go in the wrong order? I'm sorry.
Yeah, you went the wrong way.
Okay, let's go back. Thank you. Thank you, First Selectman Cosgrove. Yes, so going back to that, we had three proposals, and again, they were very competitive and close. Hinding did have the lowest bid at that point, and we've been very happy with what they have done the first two years. And I know, like you said, it's one thing, we're one of the fewer only municipalities that have clay courts, and there was a lot of talk of going back and forth, but the users really utilize those a lot. They're definitely better for our, our senior population, which I become one in a few months, so I guess I qualify for that. But it's easier on your knees and your joints, and they really got a lot of use out of it. We've had, we've had, even the kids play some tournaments on them. But Dalton has done a really, not Dalton, excuse me, Hinding has done a really good job with, you know, you don't know what you get till you have them come there, but they really, and last year they even upgraded again. And this year, with the same price, we're going to upgrade a different type of tape line, which will be, which we had the first year, which was really the best. We tried a different one last year, so they were very competitive. Everyone was within $1,000, but I felt more comfortable with what we had, you know, with what we've had the last couple of years, so...
Thank you. Get a motion to approve?
Make a motion we approve.
Make a motion, second.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing on all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Item three, to consider and if appropriate approve a request from Alex Peluzzi, Director of Parks and Recreation, to waive the bid for the refurbishing of four asphalt tennis courts at Foot Park, and award the contract to Hinding Tennis Courts in the amount of $16,000.
And I'll say too, I talked a little bit about it earlier, but in those quotes, they weren't as close, meaning that Hinding had done them a couple of years to get them back, and we spent probably close to a little over $20,000 to get there. I did bring down a couple other vendors that we've used in the past, and their prices, as you can see, are a little bit more, a little bit different, but we were trying to just get through another couple of years. I also have other prices from each of them for redoing the courts, and at this point, I just wanted to see where we would be at in the future. Hinding still had the best price at this time, not that we're going with that product, and the other two were, they were, there were some big dollars out there, so we're, you know, we'll have to take a look at that in the future down there. And again, I want to remind everyone that every dollar we have spent down there for, for Foot Park is, is paid by the Foot Trust, so it's no, no tax dollars to the, to the residents for that park. We've been able to do it the last couple of years, make some big improvements. The trust has, we applied for it, it's $200,000 a year, and we probably put close to $100,000 in capital overall, and we've made some really big improvements, and we hope to continue, to keep making them too, so...
So, do you have to go to them with this too, or you get the token of money?
Yeah, we have to, it's kind of an extensive grant that we prepare, and the air show where we spent, and then request some capital items as we have gone. And just one little caveat, if you ever get a chance to go down there, we just had the Easter egg hunt down there last week, which was, you know, we had snow the day before, snow on the ground, and we had hundreds and hundreds of kids. It was a beautiful day, but we brought everything back. The irrigation is now back at Foot Park, not only on those Hardtrue tennis courts, but there, we also have them back on the whole field, and they just redid, if you remember the old softball field, which is a girl, right now it's the best softball field in Branford, and a lot of people don't know about it yet because kind of snuck it in during the late fall and winter to get the work done, and it's, it's really, it came out really good. So, the girls really have a really nice complex now to almost call their own, you know, so...
I will make a motion we approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing on all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy Easter.
Happy Easter.
Okay, we'll move down to, back to item six, to consider and appropriate approve the Assistant Fire Chief/Fire Marshal's employment contract. If you have a copy of the contract, I'll just hit the changes that were in this contract from the Fire Marshal's previous one. There was a, an adjustment to the life insurance policy, which brought him up to the other, the insurance policy on the other fireman of $75,000. There was an increase of a couple hundred dollars in the uniform allowance. The commission and the chief felt that they were slightly underfunded, considering, you know, the wear and tear and cleaning for the uniforms due to inspections. The other one that was a, the Fire Marshal was, as you know, receives a stipend, but for his Fire Marshal duties, however, was also previously receiving cop time at the rate of, for any hours over 40 hours, in the amount of being earned at one to one and a half. So, you earn an hour and a half of cop time for every hour over 40 hours. This increased his stipend by $200 a month, or $2,400 for the year. However, the cop time now is adjusted for one-to-one after 45 hours, so he's under the salary up from 40 to 45 hours. After the 45 hours, it's a one-to-one, or previously it was one and a half to one. Those are the changes that were in from his pre-existing, or his existing contract. The Board of Finance did review this and gave it a favorable review.
So, first of all, I'll make a motion we approve.
Second.
Second.
Couple of questions. This says that the base salary of $85,704 beginning July 1st, 2016. Did he get an increase in...
Yes, he, he has received his increase, so...
So...
I think it was two, two and a half percent last year.
Okay.
So, but this, the contract was expired, so it went back to the 2016 start date for this. That's why that's, language hasn't changed.
Okay. So, I guess my, my issue with this is not so much the, the contract itself, it's the disparity between the Assistant Fire Chief/Fire Marshal, which is actually a separate and distinct position that he holds, and the budget line item in this proposed budget for the Deputy Police Chief. If I do my math right, he would be making, with the stipends, roughly 105? Does that sound...
That sounds right, yeah.
Okay. And in the budget for the Deputy Chief, it's 115. Now, I know that may not be what you end up paying in that position because of, you know, negotiations and whatnot, but it's out there, and it's something that... I just think that both departments do a great job, obviously, and there seems to be getting a pretty big disparity between what the Fire Chief and what the Assistant Fire Chief make in comparison to their, their counterpart to the Police Department. I know there's a whole lot that goes into that, and, you know, I know that this was negotiated, and that's, you know, Sean was with this too, but just for future, as we go down the road, that disparity keeps getting bigger, and the, Sean's base salary of 85, that's what his raise is based on, not 105 because of the stipend. So, while the stipends are nice to get, it doesn't give him an overall raise when he gets his two or three percent, whatever the town gives, so... That's my only comment.
Yeah, the, you're correct. The annual increase doesn't, isn't on top of the stipend, it's on his salary.
Just on the salary, yeah.
The salary.
Yeah.
You know, one thing to, and I, you know, as you know, Jack, I mean, you have commissions that are negotiating these contracts with their, you know, the respective departments, you know, the two, two commissions and they represent. Referring to the Deputy Chief, that was a, a salary range that was presented to the Board of Finance and RTM, which was accepted through that budget process, and I, you know, from the Police Commission, so that was, you know, something that we negotiated. That's, as you know, the commission...
Well, you will have the opportunity to do that.
And the other thing to mention, just to point out, as far as for compensation, you know, the, I did mention that this particular position receives cop time, you know, which is, you know, something that's not, not received, a benefit that's not received by other department heads or chiefs that this, this does enjoy. You know, I, since we're on the subject, you know, I think there's more value to have these people here than not here. That's why I, it was important to me to, you know, to try to, that, rather than the cop time being one and a half to one, you know, get it to one and a one. Now, it doesn't seem like a lot, but, you know, we need these, we need the people here. We need, I mean, required for a number of, not only for responding to the calls, but also inspections. I mean, you're aware of permit review. These are all things that we need to have people here, and, and so I see value in trying to, you know, ensure that these people are here putting the hours in, and not saying he doesn't, I mean, he earns it, but there's other services there that are being...
The idea of the cop time was because the Fire Marshal especially has a pretty good chance of being out once or twice a week at, after midnight for two or three hours for fire investigations and whatnot. So, that was the idea. But, you know, again, I think it's the, an entry, I know this goes both ways, but $115,000 advertised price for a Deputy Chief, and am I wrong? You can still negotiate that, correct? That, that has to be a contract eventually, right?
It doesn't have to be a contract, though.
Okay.
It's, you know, under the charter, the commission, as you know, the Fire Commission hires for the fire, and Police Commission hires for the police. You know, that's, that was a special legislation, special act, you know, the Connecticut State Legislature. But again, I mean, there's the, the funding aspect of it that happened through the Board of Finance, RTM, and it's still out there, so... Certainly, there, I think, you're right. You have to do, you know, consideration, and I think as far as, you know, not only for this individual, I think our chiefs, you know, there's, there're different departments, different responsibilities, but, you know, as far as our, Sean's work, I mean, you know, he does do, covers a broad spectrum of responsibilities, and he's, is here, so...
Right. Has there ever been any discussion about putting salaries into the contract? I guess similar to what's done with like the superintendent of schools, where it's spelled out every year?
Well, no, the superintendent of schools is reviewed every year.
It's reviewed, but...
And, and there's increases given.
Right, but there's, but that's it within his contract, right?
I couldn't speak to it because their, their contract doesn't come before us, but yes, you're correct. I mean, other departments, even our town, do put it in there, spelled out what the kind of contract would be.
I don't know if that would save us money or not, and...
Yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, you know, also one thing to consider is, you know, the town has a history of doing these five-year contracts.
Yep.
You know, does that save us in the end or not?
Right.
I don't know. I mean, that seems like a long time to enter in a contract when, you know, it's debatable, what is the benefit to the town on that? Because, you know, if somebody wants to leave, they can leave, you know, it's, but yet, we're obligated to honor the contract, so...
Like I said, the bottom line is a fair contract, and everybody did a good job. I just wanted to throw that out there, so...
No, I understand. All right, so, any further discussion? Hearing on all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Item seven, to consider and if appropriate approve a shellfish agreement between the Town of Branford and CW Shellfish for Bed 562. Is this agreement in here? Oh, yes.
Yeah.
All right, so this has been reviewed and approved by the Shellfish Commission, so any motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Motion to second approve.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing on all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Item eight, to consider and if appropriate approve a request from the owner of Darbar India Restaurant for the installation of an awning over the sidewalk along Main Street at 1070 Main Street. So, there is a diagram of the, drawing of the proposed awning. There was an awning there previously. I think it was in some disrepair, it was removed. Therefore, the owner is now coming back for approval to replace that.
Awnings aren't cheap.
No.
Does this have to be approved by anybody else?
No, it's just us because it's approaching over, and I think similar, last week we did our meeting or two ago, a sign that projected over.
I'll make a motion we approve.
I'll second that.
Second that? Any further discussion? Hearing on all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Item not eight, to consider, oh, I'm sorry, item nine, to consider and if appropriate appoint James Finch, Finance Director, as a liaison to handle all Neighborhood Assistance Act matters.
Motion to approve.
Approved. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item ten, green use, to consider and if appropriate approve a request from Solid Waste and Recycling Department for the use of the town green to hold the annual clean litter day on April 21st, 2018, from 9:00 a.m. to noon.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
To consider and if appropriate approve a request from the United States Postal Service for the use of the town green on May 11th, 2018, to hold the annual food drive kickoff beginning at 10:00 a.m.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Appointments, Board of Assessment Appeals, and alternate, Joseph Fazino.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dockmaster, Lino Torelli, for the 2018 boating season.
How many years has he been doing that? Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Community Forest Commission, Doug Welch, to fill a vacancy left by Christopher Warner, term to expire January 30th, 2019. And Dan Fitzgerald, to fill a vacancy left by Joanne Minicozzi, term to expire January 30th, 2020.
I recommend approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Branford Green Committee, Amy Graver, to fill a vacancy left by Tammy Becker, term to expire May 31st, 2020.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Willoughby Wallace Memorial Library, Aaron McCarthy, to fill a vacancy left by Laura Barr, term to expire December 31st, 2021.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. And Jamie, if I could just say that all of those appointments, Trista filled up my inbox with the resumes. They were great resumes for everybody. Thank you, Trista.
Item 12, to consider and if appropriate abate the taxes on the following properties. 26 Church Street, this is bill number 2016-1000866, and 28 Church Street, bill number 2016-01000867. I'll do the total amounts. First bill was for $2,569.02. Second bill was for $926.75. This is for the property that we now own.
I think Alex should pay it.
Yeah.
Motion to approve?
Second that?
Yes.
All right, all in favor, yeah.
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item 13, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The preceding program was brought to you through the support of... ...the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at brantfordtv.org.